But without further ado, I'll open up officially the January 19th, 2022, meeting of the Southampton Planning Board. And all members right now are in attendance except for Paul Fergal. So our first order of business. I also might mention that we're televised on channel 191 on Charter and also on the Zoom session. Our first order of business agenda item is for Patrick and Christine Wright. They are from Holmes Beach in Florida at this point, but they're seeking an A and R for 16 East Street. And let me attempt to bring that plan up, so bear with me.
Here's the big test.
Can you see it?
You can see your screen.
Yeah.
A list of files.
You have to open it before you share.
Yeah, I opened it. I'm seeing it, but you're not, huh? All right, Sarah, you're on.
Well, I can hear it too.
Oh, that's it, only one try? God, come on.
Yeah.
I'm just joking with you.
All right, can you guys see the plan there?
Yep.
Yay, Sarah.
Okay. And at this point, I'll let Mark Reed from Heritage Surveying and Engineering take over the presentation.
Sure, as everyone knows, the Wrights are also on the Zoom meeting, but the Wrights own some undeveloped land next to their house on East Street, their former house on East Street. And what they are posing on doing is in 2019, I'm sorry, 2019, the Planning Board approved the division of their existing house, a parcel B, which was a large piece of property, and a smaller parcel that was conveyed to an abutter. What is being done now is that the front building lot portion of the property, which will contain 3,195 square feet and have 130 feet of frontage along East Street be curated. And then parcel B dash two, which is a 4.903 acre parcel of land at the rear of the property, a large one that abuts town-owned property and is shown on the plan as not a building lot at this point in time. The Wrights have had conversations with the town about conveying that piece to them. And everyone's hopeful that that can happen and go forward. If for whatever reason, to meet the zoning requirements, because you can't create a non-conforming parcel of land, the parcel would be conveyed to another abutter that abuts that parcel, B dash two.
So B1 is a newly created lot, correct?
No, well, it's, it's, yeah, it's gonna be a new building lot, Paul. And it was part of the larger parcel B.
Right.
Frontage back when you signed it in 2018. Or 19, I'm sorry, read my, can't read.
The reason I asked that, Mark, is because there wasn't a, there wasn't a check for the newly created lot.
So I guess my point or my question to the board is whether they would, it's already a lot, a parcel of land. And under your regulations, it's for the, I believe the fee is for a building lot.
Yep.
So it was a building lot. We're just making that a smaller building lot and creating this nine-point, I'm sorry, 4.9 acre parcel that hopefully will get conveyed to the town.
But B1 is not going to be available for a legal building lot, correct? Or is it?
Yeah, it will be, it meets all the requirements as a legal building lot. And the Wrights do have a buy-sell agreement on the property. It has a percolation test, so it is, you know, a buildable lot.
All right, so why wasn't the $100 new fee submitted?
We can provide that to you. I just wasn't sure which way you're gonna do it because it's already a parcel or building lot. It was just larger and we're just making that.
Yeah, but it's also being subdivided.
Yes. So I'm sure the Wrights would have no problem providing a check for $100 to the town.
No, that was my only concern, Mark, is when I didn't see any fee for it. I said, well, jeez, if you weren't creating a building lot and it was just being added to an existing parcel, that'd be one thing. But this is now going to be, you did mention there's a buy and sell for it.
Yes.
Any other questions from the board members?
So this parcel C is part of, is not part of the property in question, correct?
Correct, that was sold to the abutter. Zoom in on it. Parcel C was conveyed to the De Frans.
De Frans.
De Frans, I'm sorry, De Frans.
Okay.
They had a very small parcel of land there. So basically, we made it a lot bigger.
Okay.
That was conveyed to them in 2019.
Okay.
And then as well as the house lot where the existing dwelling is at 14 was also sold.
So my question is, and I think you've answered it, Mark. B1 is fully compliant with residential village for a building lot in terms of acreage and also frontage.
Correct.
And then just for my interest sake, this lot next to it that Sarah was just referring to owned by the De Frans, which is a combination of two different little kind of funny shaped things. Is there a, is there any kind of building on that?
Yes, the De Frans have a house on that small parcel that abuts the street.
I see, okay.
So that the parcel C was only a vacant land or is a vacant piece of property that the Wrights conveyed to them.
Okay. I don't have any more questions.
Dan?
I mean, it's pretty straightforward, right?
Okay, for all intents and purposes, we'll take a motion to accept on the condition that a check made out to the town of Southampton for that newly created lot will be forwarded to the Planning Board.
So moved as described by Paul Demon.
Seconded.
Motion was made by Cindy and seconded by Sarah. Now, take a vote, all in favor, Cindy?
Yes.
Dan?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
And I will vote for it as well. So we have a vote of 400 to accept that. All right, thank you, Sarah, for sharing that with us. Mark, I'll sign these maps for you and drop them off at your office.
Certainly, Paul, that's fine.
And are you gonna cut the check from your office or shall I wait for the Wrights?
We can do it. And it's made out to the town of Southampton, but mailed to the Planning Board.
Right.
Okay.
All right, and I'll get them over to you, Mark.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Patrick and Christine, thank you very much.
Thanks, all, great to see you.
Keep in touch if we can be helpful to you in any way.
Be safe, thank you.
All right, thank you, good night, all.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Wright. Other than that, that was the, good evening, Joy, by the way. Any committee reports?
Good evening, sorry.
Ooh, lost the thing screen. I can give a couple of updates.
Go ahead, Cindy.
So I don't think I've reported to the Planning Board on this, but there has been a significant donation, or I shouldn't say donation, announcement by the family who owns 80-plus acres on the northern part of Palmer Meadow Road, actually, across from a very beautiful log cabin house that I know who lives in. But it's owned by the Courtney property, I mean, owns by the Courtney family. And this includes the north branch of the Manhattan River. This has gone before the Water Commission and it is considered very valuable for water recharge for our drinking water supply. They're working with Kestrel Land Trust, they went directly to them. And they're very interested in having this conserved in perpetuity. So the process will be to work with the, it's not an open space committee process. It's more in the hands of the Water Commission because of the likelihood that there'll be an application for a drinking water supply grant, wait a minute, drinking water protection supply grant. Kestrel's really spearheading this whole process. So the next step is to go before the Select Board. And I know the Water Commission has been notified of, they need to notify Ed Gibson to put it on the Select Board agenda. So that's pretty exciting. They did come to the Open Space Committee meeting last week. Mary Beth Courtney and one of her daughters came to that and it's pretty exciting really because of the value of this land for our drinking water supply. So that's one thing to tell you. Secondly, I just left the CPC meeting. A couple of things. Oh, and I should add that one of the, one of the points of impetus of why the Courtney family was interested in seeing this land conserved is related to the fact that they received the brochure that you all received as homeowners about protecting our drinking water supply in the Barnes Aquifer. And that was coordinated via the Open Space Committee. And they received that brochure and they realized the value of that. So, you know, that's kind of exciting.
I realize the value of not having cars coming right out across the street from my house on that, that property that could have been a pretty substantial subdivision.
Did you, they actually told us that one of our, you know, our successful developers in town did sit down with them about what could be built there and that wasn't consistent with their goals. So I don't know, Paul, did you go over there and meet with them at the time? I don't know if that was.
No, no, I had heard, I had heard that as you did. No, I was not involved in that discussion.
Yeah, I knew you wouldn't be. So anyway, they were, I'm impressed and I'm excited about that. The Open Space Committee continues to be in touch with, you know, large parcel landowners consistent with the charge that we have. And they're interested in talking to other landowners. I'm talking about the Courtney family, about how it's gone and what's happening. I will say that the Hendrick property donation, which is on the corner of Rattle Hill and Cold Spring Road, up the road from where Sarah and I live, that has finally gone through successfully with a conservation restriction and a donation to the town of Southampton. That's Ted Hendrick's lot, gonna say 12 acres, something like that. But we're trying to figure a way to do a little bit of a public acknowledgement and a thanks to Mr. Hendrick. COVID, winter, all these other things are kind of getting in the way of that. We haven't finalized a plan on that, but they're, you know, I'll keep you informed. But that's really generous on the part of Mr. Hendrick and his daughter Paula. So we also are working on developing, which is spearheaded by one of our committee members, Charlie McDonald. We're talking about creating a pollinator garden and that's consistent with the Monarch pledge that our Select Board signed. And that will happen on the other water protection land lower down on Palmer Meadow Road, which is, you know, not too far from Norris School. And that's going out to bid right now and that we hope will be supported by CPC money to see that developed. The only other thing I want to bring up right now is the question that came before CPC by housing about whether CPC money could support our consultant to write the zoning bylaw related to affordable housing. And I know the question of DLTA grant has sort of crossed us in terms of timing. I know, Paul, you were looking at that. That we don't have an answer as to whether or not CPC funding can be used for that. Virginia Ahart, who's our chairperson, has an excellent connection with the commission, the CPA person, she's, as you know, longstanding chair of CPC. And she doesn't have an answer, but I did tell them that at least the idea came up of whether we can apply for CPC, I mean, a DLTA grant for that. So I'm raising that for this committee right now as to whether that could be something. DLTA can be applied for by Planning Board or by Select Board. And given that we have that right before us and it's gonna be expensive for our consultant to, you know, write that draft zoning bylaw, I wonder, what have you thought about that, Paul? For applying for a DLTA grant for that?
Well, yeah, that's why I sent out the email for it. If we can get them to help again in consulting with Richard Harris, he said, yeah, they can do work for the same town in consecutive years and they can work on multiple projects if they have the money to do so or the staff.
Yeah.
So I'm going to, with your endorsement, apply for them to see if they can write the bylaw because that's extensive. And that was gonna be a big part of the money that he quoted going forward. I think if I, without looking at my notes, I thought he quoted somewhere in the area of $8,000 or $10,000 to rewrite that entire bylaw. So whatever we can get for, from PVPC, provided they accept that and grant it to us, what do we got to lose?
Do you need? I'm sorry, I missed it, what bylaw was this? Which bylaw?
The inclusionary zoning.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I thought so.
But I wouldn't, I wouldn't preclude still keeping CPC from maybe granting some funds down the road for something else for affordable housing, you know, if that's the need. Especially if PVPC doesn't grant us that this year, I don't know.
Well, it's kind of like, what comes first, the chicken or the egg here? So if.
The grant deadline is Monday.
Yes, no.
If, if you can put that through, Paul, and if you need any help, I'm not sure I'm an expert, but I'm happy to support you in any way possible. Do we need a motion to have Paul go forward and put that application in?
That's what I would recommend, that we pursue more on the affordable housing, but in particular, the inclusionary zoning bylaw.
I move to have Paul begin the process and get it going. Obviously, the deadline's looming. To apply for DLTA funding to write an inclusionary housing, affordable housing bylaw draft.
Do you have a second on that?
No, I'll second that.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded. And I do have the application forms that I got from Catherine Rotte down there. So all I gotta do is fill it out, fax it in, or email it. So the motion's been made and seconded, all in favor, Cindy, yes?
Yes.
Dan?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
So 400, we'll go ahead with the request and see where that gets us. And after that, then we'll pursue CPC. But I would keep that avenue open, though.
That'll be great. I will ask Virginia to please just pursue the question as to whether she funds could be used. She wasn't sure, she hadn't done that.
And that could be for any aspect of that bylaw of any sort.
So I just got a text from, I think Chris Falls is listening to our meeting. She says the deadline is the 24th.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay, great.
Yeah, it's Monday, yeah.
Okay, great. So anything I can do, Paul, I'm happy to help you if I can, okay?
Thank you. Any other committee reports, Dan or Sarah?
I don't have any.
Nothing.
Nothing for this, yeah.
I inquired, remember a few meetings back, we had a discussion about sidewalks and the money? And I think, I think it was with the, when Ryan Gielher was present, we started talking about sidewalks and inflation being what it is, try to use the money sooner than later before the dollars shrink. Now, I don't have an exact amount because I don't have the figures in front of me, but it's somewhere in the vicinity of, I'm gonna guess, say, $22,000 or $24,000 we have in the sidewalk fund. So I asked Randall Kemp and I copied you people on it. And he gave a chart of the different areas in town that are on a list for priority for sidewalks or sidewalk repair. And at $125 a foot, I think probably we're only gonna get maybe 10 or 20 feet with the money we have. It really shocked me. I thought we could get a pretty good stretch, but I guess that fund's gonna have to wait a while. It's either that or it's gonna have to be used if the town or whomever wants to repair something. We put that money toward what they're doing, but it's certainly not gonna buy us a tenth of a mile, an eighth of a mile, or a quarter of a mile of sidewalk where it's needed.
Yeah, Paul, one thought I had when I was outside shoveling the other day is could we put it towards some type of sidewalk clearing equipment? Because that would be within the budget and maybe help the DPW if they don't have something along those lines.
I'm not quite sure that we could do that, Dan, because it's written in, you know, in the subdivision that we have. And some of the people that contributed that might have an issue with the equipment being used elsewhere rather than building a sidewalk, using it for equipment. So that could, that could be a reach.
Okay.
I'm not saying it's impossible, but it would be a stretch.
Can I raise two other thoughts? One is, you know, we do have a grants, ad hoc grants committee, I think. Are you on that, Dan? I don't know, are you on that committee?
No, I've just been writing a lot of grants lately, so I just seem to hang out with that crowd.
But I don't know if that, the request for, you know, supplementing that fund somehow with grants, somehow, I don't know the answer, could be put before that committee. And the second thing is, as you all should know, you know, that we have this ARPA funding, which I'm not expert in, but I know that we have that 1.8-plus million dollars that's gonna come to our town over the course of the next two years to be utilized in the next four years. I hope you're all taking that survey on the town website and spreading the word. Very important that you, you know, get involved in that. But you might throw that back, you know, Chris might be listening, I don't know, but throw that back as to whether any of that funding could be used to supplement sidewalk development. I don't know if that's a possibility. I know there's various questions that can be completed, but, you know, that would be lovely to see some kind of very permanent thing like good sidewalks come to our town.
And the other thing that's not as costly, maybe Randall would have some need for, is are there any crosswalks, any high priority crosswalks? Because, I mean, with only $20,000, you can maybe make a more highly visible crosswalk in certain areas of town that may be dangerous for road crossings.
Good point, Ian, it's a good idea, yeah.
With signage and repainting and.
Right, right, because if we can't build a sidewalk, at least we can do something with the money. If that's within the, I guess we can make that fit within the scope of what those funds are for.
Yeah, what about bringing more of our sidewalks up to ADA standard?
Good point.
Because like, you know, those plates you see in cities at the end of a sidewalk that tells people if we're going to a crossing? We don't have, I don't think we have many of those, that's something.
Be great.
I'll inquire, and maybe, again, if Chris is listening in, if the Select Board, I don't know where the recommendations come from and what the approving body is to do this. But we've got some money in a sidewalk fund and if it can be used sooner than later is to get it the most bang we can for our buck before the prices go through the roof.
Well, we do have a Select Board rep on this call, so I don't know if Joy has some way to.
Yeah, Joy, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
It was trying to find out what the process is for expending funds for sidewalk construction or crosswalk, crosswalks or ADA compliant crosswalks, you know, what the process is there.
I'm not sure what the process is, but I can shoot our town administrator an email and ask him what that process would be. And would that be funding from the ARPA funds that you're talking about?
Yeah, it's the sidewalk fund account that we have, or that we have, the town has.
Okay, we just got the, a bunch, the final word on what ARPA funding can be spent on. I can review that and ask him if we, if sidewalks being ADA compliant, what the process would be for that too, okay?
Thank you.
And didn't we see something about safe routes to schools through DOT? Is that a fund that we could consider how that works?
They really wanna help us, because actually, one of the women that runs it is from Southampton. So she keeps sending me messages and I'm like, I keep meaning to follow up with her. Just been, my life has been so busy, I haven't had a chance. But she, she wants, they want to come up with a way they can help Southampton, so.
They sent us out an email, they have a webinar actually next Wednesday, and then they have, I don't know, a whole bunch of stuff. But they have a webinar for municipalities next Wednesday, it says the 26th. I'm trying to see what time it is. It's at 1:00 PM next Wednesday, the 26th. I might be able to listen in on that, just see what they have to say.
Isn't that Paul Fergal's kind of forte? I don't know, is he, that's an area of expertise, isn't it, for him?
Yeah, pretty much.
Seems to me a few things to look at a little bit, anyway.
Yeah. Well, good feedback, thank you. The only other item I have is an invoice from Richard Harris for December for $310.64 that I'd like to have approved for payment to him.
I'll make that motion.
Seconded.
Motion by Dan and seconded by Sarah. All in favor, Cindy?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
The, yes. Approved. We have, our next meeting in February, we have another session with Richard on bylaws. Continuing with the codification and picking up, I think. Common driveways is next and some other issues. But just before I close, everybody have a chance to look at the links I sent about affordable housing ideas? Weren't they interested? I thought they were interested in what you can do with a small parcel of land.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, and I hope, and I sent it to Jim Seeny too, from Housing, just to get some ideas out there when we start to craft zoning about where to place things. And it's real interesting, that one on Glendale Road in Northampton, absolutely. It's just, it's got me very excited about what can be. And, you know, people often think that affordable housing. think that affordable housing, ideally you want it close to city centers and such, you know, that was the, uh, the thought years ago, keep it in your downtown area so people can walk to it. But here's areas out in rural, uh, Northampton that have created it and, you know, it's better than nothing, but it's very, it's very creative, I think.
You know, um, I, I, we just finished looking at the A and R for that little piece of property on E Street. And Jim Seeny came to the Open Space Committee meeting saying, if there's a, a landowner that's talking about doing something with their land, can we always keep in the back of our minds if it has frontage? Could it be used for affordable housing? You kind of wanna say to a landowner, is this something that you would want to do with your land? And yet, you know, there's a sensitive part to that, you know, do we, we don't wanna say to a landowner, I don't know, it's, it's just a hard conversation to have, is this something they wanna do with their land? Put affordable housing on there or not, it's.
There's parcels in town, I'm sure you, you know, a lot more than I do, because I haven't been in this town all that long, but.
Nor have I.
Um, I'm just thinking of one on Palmer Meadow Road, uh, just up the street going toward you, Cindy, that it has the frontage, but the total parcel of the land was used on Kingsbury Lane that's behind Palmer Meadow, so that, that parcel of land is a non-buildable lot, but with zoning change, you could put something on. See what I mean? So there's, there's small parcels that are, uh, currently nonconforming. They probably aren't ideal in many areas because you could get some pushback from neighbors, but I mean, if the zoning is crafted, why not give it a shot?
Good idea.
Well, anyway, that's all I have to offer tonight unless somebody else has anything else, otherwise.
Well, thank you for sharing the, those emails, they're, they're really interesting, just wanna say that.
Yeah, they are and, uh, I, I'm, I'm really, uh, excited, uh, Northham very progressive in that, uh, in that, uh, area and they, they've done a lot for affordable housing in a lot of different areas and they continue to do so, so.
Thanks, Paul.
With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Hesitation.
We can go on.
It's not even nine o'clock at night, I mean.
Motion is made and seconded, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, thank you, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Joy, thank you.
May.